I call the Charlottesville City Council June 16th, 2025 meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the role?
Counselor Ochsler?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Vice Mayor Payton?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Wade?
Here. Is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda?
Move for approval.
Second? Second, okay. All in, any discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Should we vote on the internet?
I can't get at that.
Yeah, we're gonna do voice.
Okay.
Give us a, she's ready. No, yeah. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Okay. This is the meeting, this, our meeting will be divided into three sections. The first one will be a session to discuss and hear presentations that do not require a council vote, followed by a closed session. And then the council will have its regular business meeting at 6:30. And today, we will get an update on neighborhood development services and zoning implementation update and 2026 work plan. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Does this work for me to present from over here?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much. My name's Kelly Brown. I am the Director of Neighborhood Development Services. And I'm here today to present to you an update on the Development Code implementation, since it was adopted in 2023 and gone into effect in 2024. In doing so, I'm also going to present on our fiscal year 2026 work plan, which is essentially how we kind of view the implementation of the development, our work to implement the Development Code. I'm here with several members of the NDS team, who will be available to answer questions after I present material. Mr. Alpheli will also be presenting today as part of the presentation, the second half. So I'll start with an overview of our work plan, and then Mr. Alpheli will dive into more specifics on some work that we are doing, targeting the Development Code itself, in terms of some amendments that we're bringing forward. So, as I just mentioned, I'm here to present on the work plan and the implementation of the Development Code. I'm gonna start by just providing a little bit of background, contextual information on the organization of Neighborhood Development Services as a department, some accomplishments over the past year, key considerations in how we prioritize our work plan, recognizing that while there is always much to do, we can't do it all, all at the same time. And so, how we prioritize those work plans, given special criteria. And then, again, we'll do a focus on Development Code amendments that we are in the process of working with Planning Commission to bring forward. So Neighborhood Development Services is dedicated to creating a sustainable and vibrant community. We are made up of eight program areas. Zoning, building inspections, development services, property maintenance, really fall within our code compliance area focus. And then we also have several divisions that focus on planning services, long-range planning, transportation planning. We also have support services that provide for a lot of our GIS functionality and our intake of development applications. And together, we all work to promote responsible development, foster community engagement, and work toward a community where Charlottesville residents can thrive. We are a department of 31 staff, I also wanted to mention. So in terms of accomplishments from the past year, they are too many to list exhaustively, but a couple that I just wanted to highlight include the creation of a regional transit authority, Incarta, the efforts to bring forward the Move Safely Blue Ridge Regional Plan, and a pilot project for that. We've installed a pump track at McIntyre Park. Our transportation plan team has also identified over 60 urgent transportation improvements to address critical safety needs throughout the city, and pilot a number of different approaches to making our streets safer for all users. We have brought forward standards, updates to our cafe standards for the downtown mall and the corner. We've installed markers at Court Square and Carver Inn. We are bringing forward many development review improvements, which Mr. Alpheli will have an opportunity to speak to you about, as well as our first batch of Development Code amendments that are responsive to issues that we've identified in this first year with the new Development Code. We have conducted a complete overhaul of the NDS webpage to make information more accessible and user-friendly for members of the public that need our services. And we have also created a task force of sorts. We refer to it as a restabilizing property team to help property owners that are struggling the greatest with the maintenance of their properties. We've also been very busy with our staff development, recruiting for a long-range planning manager, a long-range senior planner, they're both part of our team now. We have a new permit technician. We are still recruiting for a student housing property maintenance inspector, but we have a transit planner on board as well. And we've also been moving, continuing to focus on staff development and training with a number of certifications for our, our building inspection and property maintenance team. Another highlight that I just wanted to make sure I had an opportunity to mention today is the work of our building inspection team. This team works tirelessly, day in and day out, to process building permits and conduct inspections. I've been able to collect some information in terms of the number of inspections and permits that have been issued and reviewed over the past two years, and as well what has happened over the course of the first quarter of this year. And as you can see, those numbers are really on track to be even, even more significant than they have been in past years. On the right is a new development map featured on our webpage that gives you a sense of the development activity in the city, where projects have been approved and where they're still under development. In blue, and those yellow dots are where we have projects under construction, really speaking to the volume of work that our building inspection team is processing. We are looking at opportunities to increase the capacity of that group through a temporary plan reviewer, and that's something that's under review by staff right now. So in terms of looking ahead to fiscal year 2026 and our key considerations, this is a slide that I've shared before, but I think it's really helpful to, to, to continue to ground us in, you know, how we make decisions about what to prioritize. First and foremost, we focus on our non-discretionary core mission services, so our code compliance work to make sure that our, our building, our construction activity, our property maintenance, that we're meeting the highest levels of requirements for life and safety. We also are prioritizing new efforts that also are in support of health and safety, and then also the implementation of the new Development Code before we add new initiatives. We consistently apply an equity lens to the work we do and the selection of it, so asking ourselves, who would benefit from this work, who might be burdened, who is missing, who, who is left out of the conversation, and how do we know, what sort of data are we using to inform our decision-making? And then, again, how does that inform the work we do and how we do that work? We seek to align our work plan commitments with our staff capacity, recognizing that we are a very capable team, but we are a team, again, of 31 staff. And so, we need to make sure that we focus on work that we can reasonably accomplish, but also try to grow our capacity through professional development and training. And then we also identify work that aligns with City Council strategic plans, excuse me, strategic plan priorities. So I'm now going to go through essentially a list of our priorities for the upcoming year, and then I will highlight a few of them that may be of specific interest. So within the strategic plan category of organizational excellence, as I mentioned, we're going to continue to focus on managing the city's review of all property development and property maintenance with applicable local and state regulatory compliance. To that end, we are continuing to work toward improvements in our electronic plan review system, our city work system, to make it easier for members of the public to review development, development activity, and also internally to be as coordinated as we can be in our review and processing of those applications. We're focused still on recruitment. We have two open positions, a zoning inspector, which will focus on short-term rentals and reviewing for appropriate tree removal permits, and protection of trees that have been designated for protection and development. We are focused on training and professional development. And then we are also focused, again, on making some improvements to our development review process, implementing a 21-day review process for by right development applications. In the strategic plan area of housing, we have a number of initiatives that are underway. We will be kicking off our 10th and Page and Rose Hill Visioning Plans this year, and I will speak a little bit more about that later on. We are focusing as well on how we can continue to train and educate the broader community about the Development Code, and opportunities to take advantage of the new regulations for additional housing. That is partially being addressed through the updates to our webpage, but we are also looking forward to creating additional educational materials that will make that information more accessible. We are monitoring the Development Code and evaluating where amendments are needed to continue to eliminate barriers. And again, that's information that Mr. Alpheli will bring forward with a little bit more detail later on. And we are creating a team, internal team, that can really develop customized plans to address that, that small number of the most neglected or deteriorated properties in the city and return them as stabilized housing opportunities. We have a number of other priorities that fall into different strategic outcome areas. So we are kicking off a study of our short-term rental regulations, and also beefing up our enforcement of the, the requirements for having a short-term rental in the city, and I'll share more information about that. We are scoping in a review of our environmental regulations and policies to see where we can achieve balance between our goals for environment, our environmental goals, our sustainability goals, and our housing goals, and the comprehensive plan. We are going to develop a scope of work this year to study our design guidelines, identifying key policy issues, and identifying where amendments might be needed to the design guidelines and the Development Code to, again, balance comprehensive plan goals for housing and historic resources. Also in the realm of historic and cultural resources, we're going to conduct a, a review of all of the accomplishments over the past seven to eight years, where there, where we have made success in recognizing key historic and cultural resources, where there are new opportunities, and then potentially prioritize future efforts. And then we are also going to conduct our state-required five-year comp plan review. A lot of the work that we do this year will likely feed into that review, identify where, where we may want to amend our comprehensive plan over the next five years, based on things that we've learned and new priorities that have emerged since it was last adopted in 2021. Okay, so one thing I'm not talking about today is all of the work in our transportation planning team. They, Mr. Chambers was with you on June 2nd to provide a very comprehensive overview of that work. He's with us here today. If you have any questions, certainly available to answer those questions. But with that, I'm gonna dive now into some of the initiatives that are underway that have been of particular interest to members of the community. Our environmental policy review and ordinance revisions is something that we've been focusing on, primarily just getting a handle on existing conditions. So what are the, the real issues that we face? What are the key problems that we need to solve? We're looking at, you know, how we balance the community vision for healthy air, water, and ecosystems, as well as high-quality and accessible open space in natural areas, and a preserved and enhanced tree canopy with our goals for housing as well. One of the things that we have realized is an emerging issue is, is there a, a better way to manage stormwater that can meet our, our environmental and our sustainability goals, and also allow for the additional housing that's envisioned in the comprehensive plan and provided for in the Development Code? So over the course of this summer, we're going to develop a work plan that, again, really identifies where, where there's some opportunities to make some changes, where is some additional study needed? If we were to revise any of our city regulations for onsite stormwater management, what would be the potential impacts? What would be mitigation strategies that might be needed to address a different quantity or quality of stormwater flowing off of any given site? Where are there opportunities for investment in the system as a whole? So we are doing a lot of work with our internal partners in utilities, in Public Works, in our Sustainability Office. And then we are also going to, through the course of this effort, identify where are there other natural resources that need some additional study and focus to, again, balance those goals within the comprehensive plan for housing and natural resources, critical slopes, streams, green buildings, and floodplains.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
You go ahead.
You might have already answered this, but will that process include, it sounds like it will include the climate team as well as the Public Works team?
Yes, I mentioned the Office of Sustainability, and the Climate Action Team is within the Office of Sustainability, and they will be, they have been partners with us in developing kind of the scope of this effort, and will be our partners as well as we develop recommendations.
Yeah, and I know, you know, I know it's engaging in a study to look at where to go, and, you know, you're not necessarily laying out the direction at this point.
That's right.
But some of the things just make me a little nervous in the sense of, if environmental, our environmental regulation's really the primary thing that's stopping new market rate supply, I would suspect not. And if we go too far, I worry, one, we've already been in a situation where our floodplain regulations have gotten the city in trouble for not being just strong enough at the level of requiring a special use permit. FEMA floodplain maps are not connected to the reality of climate change anymore. I don't know, I just worry, if we get the balance wrong, we're really going to be regretting decisions we made in 20 years if a tropical storm makes a direct impact, you know, straight through central Virginia. I know you're not saying what path we should go, but I'm just, I hope we don't undervalue the fact that we can put this off for 10 years until that direct impact storm hits, or then we're really gonna be regretting decisions we made.
Yeah, and I think part of this effort is actually to identify where our environmental policies or regulations need to be strengthened as well, given our new opportunities, or given, you know, our changing, our changing environment.
Yeah, and I know several years ago at this point, when Public Works did an analysis of our floodplain regulations, we had a score of zero based on federal guidelines for the strength of municipal environmental regulations as it comes to floodplains and mitigating flood risk.
Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me. So when I heard about this issue, there were some, maybe conflicts, not the right word, between stormwater and the housing, I think Mr. Freeze brought it a number of months ago. Could you help me just understand in very macro terms, like what the issues might be? It's just that we're doing more development, and that means it'll be more impervious area? Is that, is that it? Or we're gonna be impacting critical slopes more, or?
Yeah, so when it, when it comes specifically to the issue of stormwater, so there are requirements by the state to manage a certain amount of stormwater onsite, when you are exceeding a certain area of disturbance. And the city actually has requirements that are stricter than what the state requires. And that's fine, that's something that the state says is okay. But the question is, given that we are actually now allowing for more development on any given site than we had previously, is that lower threshold creating a challenge for people to meet their onsite stormwater requirements? Can you build the detention facilities and the housing that you want to build on the smaller lots in the city?
So to like, prevent the problem of someone's trying to build like a duplex in their backyard, and now suddenly that's enough units that requires a retention pond, which is not something that people are used to having in their backyards.
That's a good example, yes, of the sort of concern that would arise. And it's also like the cost of having to create those plans in the first place, and also just fitting that facility, and also, yeah, the, the housing that you want to build. So we'll be looking to see if we were to change that requirement for onsite stormwater management, if we were to create some more flexibility, again, and being very mindful of the need to still maintain the highest environmental water quality and quantity standards, you know, how do we mitigate those impacts? Are, are there, are there investments needed in the system as a whole that, to help address those concerns? You know, there's also questions about just the, the, the intensity of storms to begin with, which, which may, you know, speak to the need for investment that we haven't, you know, hadn't previously been thinking about. So we'll be looking at all of those factors in trying to come up with a recommendation for, you know, where there might be an opportunity for some refinements to policies and regulations moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Oh, it's me. So I'll just keep going. 10th and Page and Rose Hill Visioning Processes is the next area that I wanted to dive into with a little bit more detail. So we're very excited to be launching these studies in partnership with those neighborhoods. We are in the initial process, really, right now, kind of organizing ourselves, establishing those relationships with community members, preparing materials on what are the existing conditions in these neighborhoods that can help community members provide to us, you know, what they envision as the future for their communities, and, or, excuse me, for their neighborhoods. So we are looking to initiate this process formally in the second half of this year, and we'll be bringing forward recommendations in the winter through spring of next year. And, and one of the key features of this planning process is that we're really looking at a very short-term time horizon, different from some other small-area plans that might have like a 20- or a 30-year horizon. We're really trying to identify what are those initial wins that can make a difference for people that, for the residents of these communities. And that's what we'll be focusing on in the implementation period.
Yep, before you move on, for the engagement plan for 10th and Page, if you could send, send that to me, what I found particularly in 10th and Page is that when I walk over there, it's like half dozen people I can, that sits on the porch that won't attend any meetings, so that I can, you can find out what's going, going on. So I just wanna make sure we have a robust and inclusive engagement process. So at some point, if you could send it to me, maybe you have at some point in the...
Yes, absolutely. We would be happy to send you more information on our process and our engagement strategies. But we are definitely focused on, you know, how we center this in equity and relationship building, trauma-informed process, to make sure that, as Ms. Kinlotan likes to say, and she, she's happy to come up here and answer more questions if you want to dive into this in more detail, but moving at the speed of trust with the community to make sure that everyone is, you know, can feel ownership of the plan at the end of the day.
Is this connected to the notion on the, the Development Code, the FLUM, we had those areas that were called the sensitive, can't remember the term.
Overlay. Yeah, so the sensitive areas overlay, one of those areas is within the 10th and Page neighborhood, that RNA zoning, which has really limits the development reinvestment potential in those neighborhoods. It doesn't allow for the same number of units as in other neighborhoods. That, that is actually something where we want feedback from the community, but we are not recommending that through this process, we would make any changes to that zoning, that we would look at that as more of a, excuse me, citywide effort, as, as those overlays exist in several parts of the city.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so I also wanted to provide some information on our short-term rental study. So just as an overview, we are really looking to address short-term rentals through a three-pronged approach, focused on both outreach, amendments to the ordinance, and also enforcement of both existing and potential new regulations. So in terms of outreach, we are in the process of collecting input through an online engagement opportunity, where we're capturing opinions from both short-term rental operators and residents on, you know, what are the benefits of short-term rentals, and what are potentially some challenges or areas where a different approach might better meet the needs of the community as a whole.
And is that study on the NDS website?
Yes, you can find a link to the survey on the NDS webpage. We're actually ending that survey opportunity June 30th, so people still have two weeks to weigh in if they would like. We've also sent out a postcard to all of the short-term rental operators that we had on file, giving them an opportunity to weigh in, also as a reminder that they need to renew their applications. We have provided information on our webpage about a new streamlined digital application process, video instructions for how to create that new application, and FAQs about the home store regulations, so really creating every opportunity for residents and operators to understand what the expectations are for owning and managing a short-term rental in the city. And then in terms of amendments to actual ordinance itself, the ordinance is 10 years old, an estimated 400 of these short-term rentals in the city, so there's really been, you know, a lot has happened since the ordinance was initially adopted 10 years ago. And we're asking ourselves the question about whether the existing code is feasible, or would some changes be beneficial? We're using... We're using information from the survey as one data point to inform uh, what sort of amendments we might want to recommend. And we've also been doing a lot of research from other localities, best practices, um, to inform those recommendations as well. So we will be um, um, bringing forward our findings and our recommendations um, later this year. We are hoping to bring forward recommendations for amendments to ordinance um, by the end of the year. Um, but just in, in terms of some more information on enforcement, um, we sent out that postcard. Um, we've also sent some warning letters to non-owner occupied properties that we're aware of to make it clear that they have a limited amount of time before we're gonna follow up again um, and really make sure that they are accountable to the um, the regulations in our development code. Um, and we're uh, just trying to stay focused on enforcement as much as we can to make sure again that the rentals um, meet the needs of the community.
Remind me, the rules are your person has to be there six months out of the year or something?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Um, so I, I mentioned the timeline that um, we are going to be collecting input and um, conducting focus groups, public engagement into the fall uh, with recommendations coming forward toward the end of the year um, in anticipating that an ordinance could become a new, revisions to the ordinance could become effective in spring of twenty twenty-six. And so finally, I just wanted to highlight our restabilizing property team effort. Um, so as, um, as you may be aware, there are a, a limited number of properties in the city which really have complex circumstances that require attention bef- beyond a standard zoning violation letter or property maintenance um, code um, violation. Um, and what we have found is that bringing a number of internal stakeholders to the table um, to help troubleshoot what sort of resources property owners may need to meet the expectations, meet the requirements of the code, um, can be very helpful to, to realize compliance. So we've been partnering with groups including anchor, social services, human services, police, fire, the city attorney's office, Region Ten, and also the city manager's office to support these property owners. And again, the overall goal is really to prove, make sure that property owners have access to all the community resources possible to reach compliance in these properties.
But if the thing they need is money to remediate an issue on the property, I assume there's really nothing?
Yep, we have not identified any additional funding at this time to support those needs beyond the existing programs that, that, um, that are available.
Is there any, you know, limiting principle in terms of, obviously there, there are situations where it's kind of everyone would be clear. You know, there's not just code violations, but enormous impacts on surrounding neighbors, public health and safety. There could be a situation where there's not an impact on neighbors or public health and safety, but there's a code violation in the building and there's not money to remediate it. Um, maybe they're kind of living on the margins. If a neighbor reports that, is that included in this? Is there a limiting principle of what applies, what doesn't?
Um, so we, we conduct regular um, uh, tours around the city to identify where there are problems that need to be addressed, but we also do rely on um, input from adjacent property owners and others to, to kind of make us aware of issues. And then we evaluate, you know, the severity of the, the compliance issue and determine kind of how to respond on a case-by-case basis. And I will say, sorry, on the question of resources available, I mean, we do have a limited amount of money available to help with remediation. Um, but as we, as we um, as we go further down this road, we may find that there is a, a, a need, you know, for, for, for additional funds to help support some of the remediation efforts. Um, you know, we, we look to recoup those costs where we can, but there's, you know, typically would be required some sort of initial, you know, outlay of funds to address the issues.
Yeah, and I'm sure you all have thought about it, you know, I just think of a situation where, let's say there's a property where there's code violations, the people in it may be living kind of on the margins. It's not creating an issue of public health and safety to others. Um, but remediating those code violations at a minimum could be tens of thousands of dollars. I assume that's just not going to.
Yeah, our, our focus has been on areas where there's a significant concern about public health, safety of the residents, um, safety of, and public health for adjacent uh, residents.
Thank you.
Can you actually give a couple more, any, some examples of what these complex properties might be like?
Sure, um.
It doesn't have to be specific ones that exist, but like, what kind of thing would fall under the category?
One of the um, issues that we've actually been learning a lot more about recently is the problem of hoarding. Um, so it, it is, it is a mental health concern, you know, where um, residents will um, engage in hoarding to an extent that they're basically um, no longer able to live in the dwelling and the materials are um, collecting and, and, you know, gathering in the yard itself. And so it can become a haven for rodents and, you know, biohazards. Um, and that is actually something that we have seen in a couple of circumstances in the city. There's also um, some properties where the structure itself is just deteriorated um, to the point that it's really no longer a habitable dwelling. Um, you wouldn't be protected from the elements. Um, there could be concerns about, you know, fire hazards within the property itself. So those are some of the things that we're seeing.
So like this, the, the um, steps that we could take to like mitigate that, is that like on the way to potential condemnation?
Um, you know, typically what we are finding is that um, uh, beyond just our requiring compliance with the code through letters, um, if we um, submit complaints to the court system, that helps achieve compliance. It's not something we had um, been in the practice of until recently. As you know, we have a lot more support in the city attorney's office and they have been helping us navigate the court system in a way that can really provide attention and focus uh, for property owners um, to make the changes that are necessary. And it also allows for other resources from the city to become more engaged, um, to provide, um, you know, those mental health or community resources that those property owners might not otherwise be willing or able to take advantage of.
Thanks, and then one more question, which is um, if someone had a neighbor they were concerned about for whatever reason, is the best way to get in touch, a MySeville app report or some other way?
I, I would actually recommend contacting our property maintenance code team directly. Um, they have a lot of familiarity with the circumstances on the ground. They might already be familiar with that situation, having heard about it from someone else or are actively involved in working with the, the property owner um, to achieve compliance.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, uh, so the last area I wanted to focus on is our review of uh, or the developing a scope of work for a review of our architectural design guidelines. So just by way of background, and we have Jeff Warner here to weigh, if I say things wrong, because this is definitely not my area of expertise, but we have a number of historic conservation districts and uh, individually um, protected properties and uh, architectural design controlled districts throughout the city. Um, and we also have um, properties located within our entrance corridors, as you know. And um, all of these properties um, require review uh, by the Board of Architectural Review. Um, some interesting information by the numbers, um, the total amount of property that's located within one of these districts is about um, a little over twelve hundred acres or twenty-two percent of the city. That number is actually a little bit lower, is that right? Yeah, we're, we're still kind of honing in and refining our use of the, the GIS to, to collect this information. Um, and in terms of just that level of activity for the Board of Architectural Review and the ERB, um, you can see here that um, you know, it is a very busy um, review board um, with over, again, twelve hundred approvals and um, sixty-three denials over the past twenty years or so. Um, and no denials for um, applications coming to the uh, entrance review board, entrance corridor review board.
When I, when I read that, I just thought that was a striking, you know, piece of data and that the process may sometimes make it so it, you know, a project's first path of least resistance path doesn't occur and maybe they have to design around keeping historic preservation, but overwhelmingly, it's not blocking development. Um, it may slow it down and require some adjustments, but um, I just wouldn't have guessed the numbers were that weighted in terms of ultimately getting to approval, which I thought was interesting.
Yeah, thank you, um, and so.
Please go back.
So with all that context, um, however, there is still um, a need to take a look at the, the design guidelines um, for these districts. Um, they have not been looked at in a while and in that intervening time, we have adopted a new development code. And there certainly are questions about whether there are conflicts or um, you know, consistency between the design guidelines and the development code. And it is appropriate to um, see where amendments might be needed to both the design guidelines and the development code to better balance our goals. Um, it's also required by code that um, there is a comprehensive review and update to the design guidelines at least once every five years. So we are going to take our time over the course of this year and really undertake a very thoughtful process, not to review the design guidelines, but figure out what are the key questions we wanna be asking in, in reviewing those design guidelines and um, we will be coming back, yes.
Sorry, would that be done by staff, um, maybe you said that?
Staff will be developing the scope of work for that effort. Um, we will also be putting together a comprehensive um, engagement plan for collecting input from different stakeholders in, throughout the city on that scope of work.
But was your question about whether or not we were using a consultant?
Right.
So eventually I do anticipate that we will, we will.
But to come up with the questions and kind of what you.
Yes, yeah, I, I anticipated it will be a significant effort. There will be a significant level of effort in doing this right, and so we will bring on a consultant to support that work. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alpheli, and he is going to give us, give you all an update on our review of the development code and where we are identifying an initial batch of potential amendments.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Matt Alpheli, uh, Development Planning Manager with NDS. And I'll be going over the uh, proposed development review updates and closing out our department's FY twenty-six work plan. As you can see on the slide, uh, staff has been very busy over this past year uh, with our development community. We've had ninety pre-application meetings in just over a year um, ba- with, using the new development code. But as you can also see, out of those ninety pre-application meetings, we've only had twenty projects moved forward. And of those twenty projects that have moved forward, we've only had uh, can actually update this to four projects that have received approval. I'll also note that when you see that ninety pre-application there, that's formal pre-application meetings. You probably can double that number for just conversations, working with staff on questions, things that don't even get to the pre-application level.
And just for my own ignorance, that formal pre-application meeting, is that triggering any timelines? Or is that really just a developer indicating, you know, we're pretty serious about getting to an application?
Uh, the pre-application is usually your, your, I'm sorry, messing up and not going the direction I wanna go. Um, by the time you get to the pre-application, you're meeting with not only NDS staff, engineering, fire, utility. So you're, you have a concept and narrative, so you're fairly serious about at least wanting to move to the next stage or hearing what your major roadblocks might be before you move to the next stage. So it's, it's, you know, I wouldn't say, I'd say it's you're at least fifteen, twenty percent down the road before you have that pre-application meeting. So we're dealing with, you know, a lot of stuff that's in that five to ten percent, then dealing with the, you know, fifteen to twenty that's had the pre-app, and then that twenty that's probably over fifty to sixty percent there, uh, so forth. I apologize, I don't know where, I'm, oh, I am pushing the wrong, I was treating it like a TV remote. Sorry about that. Jumped ahead to all the spoilers.
And this might be part of what's all next in the presentation, but are we gonna go over the seventy that didn't make it to submittal?
Uh, not necessarily, because we don't.
Not like line by line, just like, are there general trends that were like?
I mean, we're, we're picking up on general trends, but a lot of times when, after a pre-application meeting, if they don't submit, we don't necessarily know why they don't submit, they're not necessarily coming back.
There's not a follow-up.
We, we, there's not really a follow, I mean, the, our door's always open, we are, we're always facilitating if there was an issue, if you need to talk to utilities, I mean, we, we have a general idea and we can definitely talk about what we're seeing and hearing repeatedly, uh, but it's not like a, a specific, I didn't submit this because X.
And, yeah, we don't send out like a, hey, we didn't hear from you, or what are the fill-out survey or whatever?
Uh, no, we've not undertaken anything like that so far.
Thanks.
Uh, this slide uh, provides a snapshot of some key developments currently under review. When you look at the left-hand column, you see that most units, unit counts fall within the six to twelve range, while Twenty Thirty Barracks Road appears to offer twenty-four units. This actually is a result of dividing the existing lot into two zoning lots, um, where each would have twelve units. This means we are seeing some missing middle housing emerge um, from these projects. However, as shown in the right-hand column, significant challenges arise during the review process. Obstacles such as closing a public street, navigating discretionary approvals to modify development standards, and addressing utility service upgrades are providing key hurdles to moving these projects forward and eventually into construction. This slide prevents the number of approved accessory dwelling units in the city as of May of this year. While the term accessory dwelling is still commonly used, it no longer appears in the development code. Instead, all residential units on a zoning lot or subplot are treated equally with no designation as accessory or primary to the residential structure. This shift in terminology reflects a broader approach to residential development, ensuring that every unit is considered part of the overall housing framework rather than a secondary addition. So that was one of the big changes between our old code and our current code is we don't, no longer have, even though a lot of people talk about accessory dwell, dwellings, that's not a term that appears in our development code. We are a unit base now, so it is just number of units on a lot and not a main structure and a accessory dwelling structure. Under the old code, the accessory dwell, dwelling requirements had a certain size, had to be less than uh, the size of the uh, existing structure. So you're kind of constrained by that. Under our current code, you can have, um, depending on the zoning districts, the units all can be the same size. So there's not something that's primary or secondary to that primary structure.
So am I interpreting that correctly, that those nineteen units there would not include any short-term rentals, or could it?
It, it could, uh, it's not broken down like that, it's just somebody was building what we would all, used to consider accessory dwelling, but we really just consider adding a unit to the property now. As we transition from the uh, from the overview of our current development landscape to our vision for the future, uh, our primary focus is on updating and amending the development review process manual in key sections of the development code. This effort is designed to streamline uh, the creation of residential units aligning with the core goals of our comprehensive plan. To achieve this, we are exploring strategies to shorten review times, enhance the efficiency and value of the development plan, and establish clear expectations from both city staff and the development community. This initiative is well underway and we are synchronizing these implementations with the adoption of development code amendments scheduled for later this fall or early winter.
I'm sorry, so have you met with cadre?
We've met with cadre, yes, uh, two times so far since, uh, in the last.
Okay, and that was a good conversation?
Yes, uh, it was a good conversation, good feedback. We've had uh, additional feedback where we're missing uh, reaching out to a smaller set of our developers that are more in that missing middle range, but I'll kind of, I'll speak to that here in a little bit.
For the people watching might not know, can you explain what cadre is?
They are a coalition of our developers in the city that uh, they get together periodically. Um, they uh, can't remember the history of it, but there, yeah, there are local developers and builders. They're open to all developers and builders, they tend to be some of our larger developers in the city that we work with all the time. Um, but that, that's kind of their organization.
So large-scale, like, how big are their projects generally?
Um, there, in the meetings I've, I've been at, you've had both what I would consider medium-scale, NOLA builds, all the way up to our Southern Development-type builders, which build some of your larger 200 units.
Okay, thank you.
The next few slides were presented to the Planning Commission work session on May 27th. This particular slide provides a broad overview of our development code, highlighting its origins and the reasons behind our proposed revisions. Our current code, adopted on December 18th, 2023, was designed to support a form-based zoning approach aimed at increasing density and aligning with the goals of the 2021 comprehensive plan. More than just a regulatory framework, this code serves as a guide, guiding tool to shape the neighborhoods in a structured way that allow for changes along the way. However, however, over time, staff has identified several areas needing refinement, ranging from minor grammatical errors to more substantive changes necessary to efficiently advance the city's objectives. To manage these revisions, we've structured the process into the following three tiers. Tier one focuses on minor corrections, small edits and adjustments to ensure that, and changes to ensure the code stays compliant with state regulations. Tier two addresses overlooked details from the original drafting, offering needed clarification and refinements. And finally, tier three involves more significant policy changes that require thorough analysis and meaningful community engagement. These adjustments go beyond simple refinements and are aimed at shaping the broader impact of the development codes and regulation. Importantly, these revisions are not a one-time effort. Tier ones and tier twos will be updated annually to maintain and, maintain a current code that reflects best practices and supports sustainable community, community growth. This is an ongoing and living documents and will help ensure that our development framework is always up to date.
And, sorry, quick question about that. In the next steps, you say advancing a public hearing for adoption this fall, does that mean every time we have to fix a typo, it has to be a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
We should do a whole bunch of them all?
Yes, absolutely.
That is why we're trying to batch them together.
Yeah, I can definitely appreciate that.
Anytime we're, it is an ordinance, it's a zoning text amendment, and so we're, it does have to be that. All right. Next, we have the tier one amendments are essentially refinements that keep our development code clear, precise, and up to date. This tier focuses on correcting copy, copy editing issues, filling in missing text, and making small but impactful adjustments to ensure the code accurately reflects its intended meaning. A key component of tier one is integrating legislative updates based on recent actions passed by the Virginia General Assembly. These changes help maintain compliance with our current regulations while ensuring the code remains both reliable and, and functional. The scope of these amendments are narrow, created on technical corrections and minor refinements. They improve clarity and consistency without altering the policy direction of the code. Next, these proposed one amendments will be presented at an upcoming public hearing. Looking ahead, we see this process as an ongoing effort where we collect these and again, move them forward yearly. And here are some examples of just these small type of grammatical edits in the slide. As kind of with the grammatical changes, we have the legislative changes. And two of the biggest changes that came out this year had to do with shortening our review times. Our review times, especially for accepting plans, will be shortened from 10 days to five days. And then the amount of time we have, staff has to review subdivisions, final site plans, and development plans has been shortened. And then the second large change that came out of the state is a majority of the administrative functions from Planning Commission are being shifted to staff. This includes approving subdivisions, development plans, and final site plans, so that will now be done by staff and not by Planning Commission. Planning Commission still will be making recommendations on things like special exception permits and special use permits, but actually approving the development plan now falls on staff.
Can you quickly talk about what are the, and this might not be for this part of the presentation, but what does Planning Commission have left to do?
So, I mean, they have their comprehensive, comprehensive plan goals, they're an important body in that. But there are the body when someone does a special use permit, a rezoning or special exception, they review that material to provide a recommendation to this body. So anytime a special exception, special use comes forward, you, this body gets a recommendation from Planning Commission, so that'll be one of their main, their main focuses.
Okay, cool, thanks.
And they also, they also hear when we bring the amendments forward, anything that requires a public hearing, they will hold a public hearing too on those and make suggested changes, so that when you get the final amendments, it comes with Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
And public facility review. So, went to stay in line with the comprehensive plan. If something needs a facilities review, they're the ones that do that for the comprehensive plan level.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the tier two amendments, now we move on to the tier two amendments aimed at refining the development code by addressing, addressing gaps and ambiguities and improve clarity and usability. This tier focuses on adjustments that enhance the code, ensuring that everyone using it is, can see it in the same light. One example of this change is the fee schedule, where minor amendments will help refine the development process, including adding an application of fee for sublots. So currently, we don't have an application or fee for sublots, they're handled through a boundary line adjustment. So that's one example. Tier two covers a broad range of modifications, additions, and removals to ensure regulatory, the regulations support planning objectives while maintaining consistency. Staff will gather additional feedback from the Planning Commission in August, with select amendments moving to a public hearing in the fall. Like tier one, this will be an ongoing process that we plan on bringing forward yearly. Here we have a few examples of the proposed amendments and draft language aimed at addressing key issues within the development code. First, the current code prohibits attached dwellings units in the R District. While staff has worked with applicants on a subplot-based workaround, this approach is costly and inefficient, hindering efforts to expand housing options in the city. The issue is discussed at the Planning Commission work session on May 27th, and further updates will be provided for their August work session. So this code amendment is coming from the fact that because we have a unit base where it's not about type of housing, our code does not speak to single-family, duplex, triplex, quadplex. We think about those things when we're thinking about the built environment, but the code speaks to units. And due to that, the code has a side setback of four feet on zoning lots, which is preventing someone from building a duplex on a zoning lot. So, and it also has made a lot of our city non-conforming. The workaround has been to do, to do sublots on a zoning lot, where you have one zoning lot, you create two sublots on it so that the middle lot, the middle property line doesn't have the four-foot setback. You have a zero-foot setback, so you can do that. But that is, it's a bad workaround, it takes away your density because two zoning lots cannot do that. So staff has worked on an alternate form approach to this type, ran that by Planning Commission at the work session, they've asked for some refinement, we're working on refining that, and we'll present that to them at the August work session.
And so, a lot of technical detail there helped me break it down to understand it, maybe in more layman's terms. So if a developer bought two lots, they would not be able to build structures that are connected on those two different lots?
If you.
Except for that workaround.
Correct. If you bought two zoning lots, or if you had two zoning lots in the city and you lived in a duplex that shared a common wall, you would not be able to build that under the current code because those side lot lines have a four-foot separation, so that's a total, you need to be eight feet away from your other building. And the workaround is that does not apply to subplot lot lines, so that's been the workaround, but we were trying to get that, a better solution so you could build a duplex type, what we call a single-family attached type structure. Next, we are introducing a pathway for residents and developers to make small improvements to their lot without resorting to expensive additions to the front yard solely to meet build-two requirements. This amendment facilitates the inclusion of sheds and outbuildings while preserving the code's intent for a more urban landscape. So this comes out of the fact that the, the code right now, you have to meet the build-two requirement, which are urban fabric, we're wanting the buildings to be closer to the street. And you have a certain percentage of that build-two you have to meet before you can build a new building on your site or a new structure. So where this is causing an issue is if you wanted to build a shed or a small little workshop in your backyard, if you don't already meet the build-two requirements in the front, you have to do that first before you can build that new structure. So we're working on ways so someone doesn't have to do that whole addition to the front yard so that they can build something in their backyard. Finally, a proposed update aims to codify an existing policy, existing policy related to one- and two-unit construction. Under the current code, all new constructions and additions require, require a development plan and a final site plan, adding significant time and resources before the building permit can be reviewed and issued. The existing policy has allowed the building review process to substitute for the development review process, but tracking has become challenging and hard to keep up with. Staff is recommending exempting one- and two-unit projects from development review, allowing them to proceed directly to building permit review while ensuring full compliance with the zoning regulations. So zoning compliance review can happen at different stages in the review process. The development review process is the process a lot of people are familiar with, your final site plan, the development plan, but it can also happen at building permit. And under our old code, this happened where one- and two-unit, one- and two-unit developments were exempt from going to site plan, could submit straight for building permit, but they're still reviewed for zoning compliance. It does not give them a pass on zoning compliance, it's just that's done at building permit. Our new code has a lot more vertical elements than our old code. Our old code was really just about setbacks and height, and so you could do that check at zoning. Our new code has a lot of vertical elements, but those vertical elements are shown on your elevations you would submit for building permit. So the policy, we, we've kept the policy from our old code, but we treat those building permits as your final site plan. That's just been very hard to track, keep up with. So we're suggesting exempting one- and two-units if you're, if you're going, proposing a single-family or a duplex, you can go straight to building permit, but you're still going to get zoning review. It's, that's not a, you're not getting a round zoning review, it just happens at that Next, we turn to the tier three amendments, which focus on comprehensive policy changes and address development issues that go beyond simple language tweaks. Unlike the technical fix in tier one or the minor refinements in tier two, tier three amendments are fundamental to the city's policy direction and offer, and often require long-term planning strategies. Any of these updates aim to establish or redefine key policy directions and will require analysis due to the, much more analysis and community engagement due to the broad impact and complexity. Given their significant, given their significance, community engagement is essential. Outreach efforts will be designed to gather feedback and ensure proposed changes align with the public's priorities. Because of these complexities and the resource demands, tier three amendments will be integrated into future NDS work plans. This phased, dedicated approach allows for detailed research, stakeholder input, and an extended review period, ensuring thoughtful and well-vetted implementation. So the, the key thing I'll give here is tier, think of tier one as no thought, tier two as some thought to make the change, and tier three as deep thought.
Does that include, or sorry, I'll have to go to the next page.
This slide highlights three key policy issues that could lead to tier three amendments, focusing on fundamental changes that require thorough analysis and broad community input. The first issue involves clarifying acceptable heights and building links for townhouses and other infill-type projects in the residential districts. Proposed amendments would refine standards, including defining what a building is, height requirements in feet and stories, bonus heights for additional units, and build-two with regulations. The second focuses on refining goals for the RNA District, ensuring a clear distinction from other residential districts. This review will weigh the benefits and challenges of RNA requirements leading to potential policy adjustments. And finally, further study is needed to explore opportunities for neighborhood services and neighborhood services at a retail level within residential areas. This includes zoning amendments and policy changes that balances accessibility of those needs with the community's requirements. Each of these policy discussions will shape long-term planning and require careful consideration to ensure they align with the city's broader development goals. And then this slide outlines several specific examples that we've run across, kind of athletic fields, clarifying how a building and structure should be oriented. And this also kind of covers, and I want to kind of go back, because one of these that is, is always a sticking point in these conversations is when I talk about what a building is, because that seems like something very straightforward when we're talking, well, yeah, we know what a building is. This, this gets a little confusing when, again, we're unit-based, and the example I'll give is currently in our code, we talk about when you get a bonus for height. And it talks about when a building has multiple units in it, you get a bonus for height. Sounds very straightforward, but it's actually very confusing when you start to throw property lines in, because when a property line bisects a building, that building becomes two buildings, it's no longer one building. And so from your built environment standpoint, it may look the same, but from a code compliance standpoint, it's very different. And so that's when we, we were talking about this policy, when we look into what do we want buildings to look like, that's what that is getting into.
The, the questions I was going to ask about what's included, I was kind of touched on this, but I want to highlight them, which is the, the mixed-use commercial. And in the code, there is a form that says, when allowed, you can do this, but then there's nowhere else in the form that allows it.
Correct.
So I appreciate that that's on this list. And then also the, this might have been kind of what you were talking about just now, where the heights, the height and story limit is a little wonky, like a single-family gets to be two and a half stories, but a duplex can be three. And that means a lot of the, like I have a, someone I know who used to live on Huntley Avenue in Fire Springs, which has a lot of three-story, single-family homes, so now those are all out of compliance, even though they're house-sized and single-family, they are dense on, on smaller lots, but still single-family. And so like that suddenly wouldn't be allowed, and I know that's the kind of development we would want to encourage.
Correct. And this gets down to the policy issue of, it's, it's wanting to make sure we hit the both parts of the two-part question. What is house size and how do we make sure our code is actually capturing it? Because we have an idea of house size, but then the code, again, something that you would look at to on the street, it could be two different things just based on where the property line is. That duplex example, if it's a, two units on one property, it gets more height, but if there is a shared, if there's a property line running down the middle of it, it is treated as two buildings, even though it would look just the same as the one next to it where it's the two units on one lot.
And I also think that kind of steering away from the phrase house size is also probably good, since, you know, we all live in, the houses are apartments where we live, but also the Biltmore in Asheville is a house. And, you know, that there's a big gulf in that range, and so kind of making sure that we all are thinking the same thing about the different typologies that we're, we're talking about, I think is, is a good way to kind of start shifting the language there.
Very good. So what I have here. Uh, so what I have here, uh, for you is our updated timeline, and this reflects the next step in key milestones following our, uh, May 27th work session with Planning Commission. As you can see, a new work session with Planning Commission was added in August to focus on tier two amendments. The structure will be similar to what the final staff report and amendments that'll move forward in October, at the October public, public hearing will be. Commission will, will review each amendment's existing language, proposed revision, and staff's analysis, allowing them to make edits and recommendations before finalizing the amendments and moving them forward to City Council. Um, what's also listed on here is a listening session at Planning Commission for July. Uh, the date should be finalized here probably in the next week or so. Uh, but this will be an opportunity for the development community to come in and hopefully it's, uh, we're going to frame it in a way so that they can point out concerns that they're having with the development code, but we'd also would like to hear where the development code has been helpful. That, I think that would be also beneficial. So that'll be in July, then followed by the work session in August, and then the initiation of the zoning text amendment and fee schedule update, and the public hearing in October. And then the, those recommendations will be in your hands in November, December. And then before-
Before you change slides, can I have a question about the July meeting? How are we reaching out to builders and developers?
So we have a good listserv we're going to be sending out. Uh, we, staff works a lot with these developers and builders. We're going to be making sure that they're aware of this. And this is a good, um, a good point to, we, we know we have, we've engaged with some of our larger developers. We're trying to do better about engaging with our smaller developers. But I do want to highlight, this is one of the, when, when we talk about these distinctions between tier one, tier two, and tier three, and the tier three being the broader community engagement, that includes our development community too. That's just not our residents. So when we're talking about when we might need to hear more from the community, that includes that, that body too. Where we've kind of put the line between tier one, tier, tier one and two and tier three is, is really, does it need more community engagement than a public hearing? And if it really needs more communication, more engagement than a public hearing with Planning Commission and City Council, it really needs to be a three, a tier three item so that we can do that public engagement, uh, with all stakeholders.
Great. Thanks.
And then with that, I'll turn the last slide over.
Could I ask one question, please?
Yes.
At one point, I'm trying to think where I heard this, but there was some points that were made around, um, I remember we had the consultant help us do a change.
Rate of change.
That, that word, rate of change. In other words, how quickly this would actually be adopted and start producing housing. And it seems like we talked at some point recently about even tax abatement for additional units and so on. Is that something that you guys are also looking at, or is that further down the road?
Unless Mr. Fries wanted to jump in. Um, so there was a, a study completed before the development code was adopted that, uh, projected a rate of change, um, about 2% per year of, um, eligible lots for this sort of, that could take advantage of this sort of development opportunity, would do so, would take advantage of the opportunity and move forward. So a very small percentage of, um, city parcels would, would start to, would start to see reinvestment. Um, I would say we're not even meeting that projection at this moment in time, considering, you know, we're looking at three approvals over the past year. Um, so we are, you know, starting to ask ourselves, like, what are the barriers that we need to be addressing to, to better meet our goals? Um, and all the things that we're bringing forward tonight, um, well, not all of them, but many of them are really working toward that. You know, what, what, what are the changes to environmental regulations that might be, um, you know, needed to help, to help facilitate our housing production? Um, you know, where are there other conflicts that we, we need to address? Um, we are, um, also looking at, um, financial tools for housing production. Tax abatement is something that, um, we are studying as part of, um, actually a, a broader market study to understand what is the feasibility of housing production, given all the other factors, you know, that you might think of, um, the, the cost of, um, materials, interest rates. Um, and, you know, how, how could tax abatement help to, to, to fill that gap? Um, is it, is, and we'll be looking for some feedback from you as we bring forward that recommendations. That is actually also an opportunity out, to mention something that, um, I hadn't mentioned previously, which is that Neighborhood Development Services will be bringing on, um, the housing team from, um, the Office of Community Solutions that, uh, is going to be closing. And we are looking forward to having the Housing Program Manager and the Housing Compliance Officer as part of Neighborhood Development Services. Um, they will be continuing the work that, um, they have previously been doing. And I'm, uh, just, I think our whole team is really looking forward to working with them, uh, toward meeting the goals of the, the Affordable Housing Plan and Comprehensive Plan in that area.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. So that does, that brings us to our last slide. Items that had previously been identified, um, but are not prioritized for this year. Um, so these, uh, continue to be very important items, but, um, again, given those key, uh, work plan considerations, um, for prioritization that I mentioned earlier, these are not being brought forward for this year. We will, uh, look to incorporate them in future years. Um, that is the implementation of the Star Hill Plan, um, a downtown mall study. So really looking at questions of height and form. Um, however, in evaluating, um, design guidelines, um, the architectural design guidelines, that, that might present an opportunity to address some of those questions. Um, the alley study is something that we are not prioritizing this year, and we have also, um, identified the noise ordinance review and update as something that had appeared previously. Um, this is something that will most likely be tackled through more of an interdepartmental study. Um, so just didn't want to lose sight of those, those items that had been brought forward previously. And yes, with that, um, oh, so we actually have a few more slides, sorry, but wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to just give an update on our, um, from our conversations with Planning Commission. So we did present this material at Planning Commission last Tuesday and, um, got a lot of really good feedback. I think Mr. Alpheli has gone through a lot of that feedback, just in talking about our path forward, uh, for, um, continued review and, uh, refinement of the development code amendments. Um, and in terms of like broader feedback on our work plan as a whole, there was general support for the prioritization of, of what they characterize as a very robust work plan. Um, they did have some feedback on items that haven't been prioritized. Is there a way to be creative in, uh, using interns or maybe even AI to conduct the research that's needed for the alley study? Um, to really be mindful of previous deliberations on critical slope waivers, if we're going to be taking another look at critical slopes. Um, really emphasizing how good it will be when we have some pre-approved accessory dwelling plans that we can share with the community. Um, really focusing on, uh, clear and objective amendments for short-term rentals regulations, so that if there are cases that come to the Board of Zoning Appeals, it is easy to be able to, um, provide a ruling, um, that reinforces what we are looking for in our regulations. Um, and then as we embark on a new, um, chapter in our small area planning work, to just clarify expectations for how we select areas, how we prioritize areas, um, and, you know, what qualifies for a longer-term small area plan versus a shorter-term visioning or strategic plan. So those were some areas of broad feedback. Um, also got some feedback on how we can be mindful of combining and coordinating initiatives to avoid planning fatigue. I mean, I'm feeling a little fatigued just having shared all of this work with you. And I know that it will be just something we have to just constantly monitor, you know, that if we are doing engagement, um, we are really not overlapping if there are requests for feedback on major citywide initiatives. And just to be strategic in how we're getting, phasing and sequencing requests for feedback. Um, there was a question about, you know, increased fees that we've received this year, uh, for some of our major, um, projects that are under review. Um, and, um, you know, how, how that factors into opportunities to, uh, increase, um, our resources, our staff resources for plan review. And as I mentioned, uh, at the beginning of the presentation, we are evaluating internally potential to use some surplus funds or request surplus funds for a temporary position to support application review. So that brings us to the end. Thank you very much. Happy to take any questions or comments you might have.
Yeah, I think we were asking some as we were going along, but I'll start with you. Lloyd, did you have any follow-up?
The, the question was asked earlier and, uh, maybe a little judgmental to say ducked a bit. Uh, but I'm curious about what, out of the 90 applications, 90 pre-applications, 20 actual applications, three actual approvals, were there consistent patterns or any interesting patterns at all in the things that, of the 20 that were submitted and the 17 of those that were denied, or simply not approved, maybe is a better way to put it?
So those, um, they were, a lot of the things that come up, uh, in the denials and were waiting, they're going through the process. Some of them are working through addressing those deficiencies. A lot of the deficiencies weren't on necessarily the zoning side, but they were on things like the utility side, uh, where an applicant, um, didn't have physically the room to do individual, they wanted to do sublots, so they wanted to make four or five sublots, which each lot then would have to have its own lateral for sanitary and water. And there physically wasn't enough room. So they were reevaluating with this project move forward without doing a subplot, doing all the lots on one lot, um, then where you could run one lateral, uh, to that, to those, that structure.
Uh, just briefly on that point, I think we heard last time about a concern about whether that ordinance needed to get changed so you don't have to have one lateral for every unit being, being built. Is there discussion about that kind of a change that might need to be made?
Uh, yes, there, I mean, there's discussion. I know, uh, utilities is aware of it and how they can better foster and promote the goals of the comprehensive plan. So I know it's something they're, they'll be looking at.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, but that, that was physical, the physical restraint's been one issue we're running into. Um, as Director Brown spoke earlier, you know, you, you, you look at the highest number you can do on this, on this lot. So you maybe come in with a concept plan for six units, but you're only a 6,000 square foot lot. And you don't, and you're not, you don't have room to put your detention facility. And so because it's a common plan of development, you're developing all six lots at once. You're required to do this distant, uh, retention, uh, facility for your stormwater. And there physically just isn't room for it. So that's been what we've come up, uh, run up against. Another has been access for fire suppression, where a lot of, a lot, our lots are narrow. And so when you're putting more units, you're putting them in the back. And so fire has, you know, they have their regulations about how far, the furthest point of that structure can be from pulling the hose. So that's been another, uh, area that we're seeing some, uh, some hurdles that they're running in, that applicants are running into.
Are, are there some, uh, proposed changes that you all are thinking about, or is it one of these things where everything is, is sort of a one-off problem and it's hard to synthesize it all into something?
No, I, I mean, we're thinking about it. We're gathering this information and, and then trying to think the best way to deal with it. I can say that the, the tier one and tier two amendments that, that I have been speaking to are ones we definitely feel we, we can make a changes to.
Sure.
And then these other things where we've been gathering information and finding these issues, we're like, okay, this, this is going to need more brain, brain power from, from the city, from our residents, um, from our development community. How can we address these? Sure.
And I'll just add too, that I think what we're learning is that there isn't a silver bullet. You know, there isn't one policy change or one amendment to the development code that will all of a sudden see those numbers skyrocket. Um, I was just at a conference this, this past week, Congress for New Urbanism, and, you know, something I heard from, um, you know, consultants that rewrite development codes around the country was that if you're going to rewrite your development code, you, and, and we, I mean, we indicated this when we, before we brought it forward, you know, you, you need to expect that you're going to be bringing forward multiple rounds of revisions over time to, to, to fine tune it to, to what the, the needs are of the, the local context. Um, there's also other factors, you know, that are influencing, um, housing production in general. Um, this, what we're learning is that, um, while one and two units are, uh, perfectly appropriate for, uh, conventional financing, um, once you get into three-plus units, you're moving into, um, not only the commercial building code, which, uh, requires sprinklers and you have to think about, your stair wells differently. So it, it adds cost, um, but you're also needing commercial lending. And so this is, this is a brand-new type of construction that, um, you know, it just hasn't been allowed for the past 40 or 50 years. So I think the market is still learning how to respond to these new opportunities as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we got about five minutes. We have a robust closed session, so if you have any-
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work, all of you. As I look on the list of things that's been, have been accomplished, um, and the goals that, um, you have for the future, I, I reflect back to when I first came on council three and a half years ago. It's remarkable the amount of work that y'all have gotten done.
Yeah. Agreed, agreed. It's awesome. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate those comments. I'm really fortunate to be part of this excellent team. And I'm sure they would all stand up and tell you lots more things about the work they're doing if we had time.
Um, we have a few more minutes. Um, Michael?
Yeah, I'll, I'll save the questions, just in interest of time, but, um, I'll say, you know, I'll just echo other comments in terms of the amount of work that's going on. Um, you know, trying to update the new zoning code itself is huge. And obviously you outlined a lot of big initiatives, short-term rentals, small area plans, uh, historic preservation. It's a whole lot. Um, I'll just say I'm very interested to see, you know, kind of a big-picture market analysis. Um, to echo what Councillor Pinkston said, you know, I know the old one, even when it took out including any inclusionary zoning, found a very slow rate of change just given market conditions. And that was with lower interest rates, lower land values, lower construction costs. Um, so I'm just kind of, I think that will make a big impact on what trade-offs make sense and which ones don't. You know, if getting rid of all environmental regulations is really, you know, 1% of, you know, slowing down new development versus broader market conditions, is that a smart trade-off? Um, and I also, you know, you raised the question, which I've also been thinking a lot about, is at what point do we reach the limit of zoning inducing new supply versus needing to figure out how do we get involved on the financing side? And to what extent is financing a barrier for spurring new supply? And I'm not saying there's not more tweaks for us to make, but I'm wondering if some of the biggest things we need to look at is either locally or statewide, um, getting alternative financing mechanisms, which I don't know the answer to.
The Painting Development Bank?
Well.
Natalie? Um, yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of quick follow-ups to what Lloyd was saying, um, or what he was saying reminded me of a couple of things. Um, for, you mentioned, and we were talking earlier about, uh, stormwater management and how this code is all unit-based, but units are not necessarily square footage and stormwater is a square footage problem. So is changing that part of the plan too?
So stormwater is regulated by the state, actually by square footage and also number of units. Um, so the, the state has a minimum, um, square footage requirement for managing stormwater. It's 10,000 square feet. Um, and it, it also can only apply to two-plus units. So stormwater regulations, uh, do not apply to single detached development.
A 10,000 feet, like bird's eye view? Like, I mean, what I mean by that is like a 10,000 foot-
Oh, sorry, 10,000 square foot of disturbed area. Yes.
Yes, thank you. That's what I meant.
Yes, not, not GFA.
Yeah, but so like if there was, um, four units that took up the same square footage as two units, you just had another one on top, like that doesn't disturb any more square footage.
Oh, sure. Yes, yes. Um, yes. Build, uh, building height can certainly, like having, having flexible building height, uh, can certainly support building up rather than out. Yeah.
And, but that, that would change our stormwater management plan, because now there's four units, not two, but there's no additional square footage.
I think I might've lost you. Can you kind of reframe, restate the question?
Yes. So, um, when a stormwater management plan has to be activated by a certain number of units, if those units were added vertically instead of horizontally, there's no additional square footage that has been disturbed. So why would a taller building with more units need a water management plan that a shorter building with the same square footage need?
The same footprint?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think it, from a stormwater perspective, it all goes back to how much area is being disturbed, regardless of the number of units.
Not number of units. Right.
The only caveat to that is that we can't regulate- The only caveat to that is that we can't regulate stormwater for properties that only have one unit on them.
Sure, that's fine, but I'm more concerned about, like, the duplexes, the quadplexes that people are trying to build that count as four units, but might not be any greater footprint than a duplex or a single-family home.
There would be no difference in the requirements for stormwater, based on the number of units?
Okay, great.
Right, yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I was hoping for. Okay, and then, for the utility connections for the sublots, how do we resolve that? Like, if we all collectively think, like, hey, it'd be great if they didn't each have to have a separate pipe, what is the, the utility department gets involved in changing their regulations, and how does that conversation go?
Well, I think it's a question that's happening, it's a question that's being posed internally right now, and, you know, Utilities is a partner to us in the development review process. So, I don't really have any more specifics at this time on how that conversation might happen, but I, like Matt, Mr. Alpheli said, it's definitely something that they're aware of, and, you know, they have raised their concerns about, about requiring the individual connections, why that's important, you know, if the water, if there's, if there's, if there's a problem with one unit, you want to be able to just shut off that lateral rather than having it affect all the rest of the units. You know, it's a kind of a liability question, I think, for the city. But I think it's really, you know, important for them to be a part of that conversation moving forward.
Okay, as long as that conversation's happy, it's great.
Thank you.
And I just had one question, and that is, you mentioned that you're waiting to, you need to hire, I think, University Housing?
Yes.
Which, is it been advertised?
It's been advertised for many months. We had a candidate that we thought was going to come join us, and it fell through, unfortunately. Challenges with the position are that you are required to have a minimum of three years of construction experience, and it's really kind of an entry-level salary. And so, we're just continuing to recruit. Would love it if anyone could help us spread the word about the opportunity, but we do, you know, post it through, through the different channels that we're familiar with, and just hoping to get some good candidates.
Thank you, and your staff, for all the work that you've done, and this presentation was a great update, very informative, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you read us in the closed session, please?
Thanks.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Code, I move that the City Council close this open meeting convened in a closed session as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as follows. One, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for discussion and consideration, the appointment, performance, and salary of a specific named appointee of the public body specifically to conduct the city manager's annual performance evaluation. And two, under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for discussion and consideration of prospective candidates to be appointed to the following boards and/or committees. One, Shawcell Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and two, the Retirement Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Great, be back at 6:30, maybe a little bit later, we have a lot to do, so thank you.